The council president has indicated the mayor can start the meeting at any time. Let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Home Town Ace Hardware.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
First impressions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? We have an agenda. We have a special guest, Al Hulik, tonight, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Does anybody in the audience want to speak on anything on the agenda? Or do you want to wait till the item comes up on the agenda? Wait. We'll wait. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding modification of special event permit request for Milton Community Days.
So Milton Community Days is hosted by Open Doors Foundation, and they have two more events this year, August 4th and September 1st, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM each evening. So this is not a new event. This is similar to what the Milton Night Market was last year, and so for approval, we have approved internally from staff the same requirements from last year. However, they would like to make a modification of including the road closure along College Street up to Columbus Street. And we do have the organizers in the audience this evening.
I made a map.
And Charlotte's passing out a map. Make sure Dwayne gets one too. Charlotte, are you speaking on this?
Am I what?
Are you speaking on this?
No, Andrea's.
Okay. First and last name and address, please.
Andrea Gaski, 53, Sunset Drive, Milton, Wisconsin. So what we're looking to do is basically just take what we currently have and extend it up to Columbus Street. The changes that would make is that we would have more parking, kind of get it less congested for people that are coming because it has been growing. The, it would also give us more, you know, small businesses in the area that are looking to join. It brings it up to Charlotte's Coffee Stop, which also kind of brings more business to some more areas in the town, in that area. The negatives would be that it isn't a residential area, and to, I guess, kind of fix those issues, we would have notifications going out quite early. Anything with a generator would be put on Park View so there's not a noise issue. And then we would have specific parking spots at Charlotte's Coffee Stop to have places for them to park if they didn't get to where they needed to go within that three-hour window that we're actually operating.
Any questions or comments from council?
And we have more space. It'll give us more space for any handicap people as well. We would be able to then put in place actual handicap spots.
Has there been any comment from residents, or do they just not know at this point?
We haven't heard anything negative, or at least I haven't.
Okay, Charlotte Walker, 646 College Street. No, we actually asked all the neighbors last year and the beginning of this spring because we thought we might actually go up to Columbus Drive, and they thought it was fine for three hours once a month. So they were okay, but we still do plan on giving plenty of notice too after, if we approve it.
Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, thank you. Alright, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event permit request for the Milton Community Days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2023-519, ordinance amending section 70-183B specifying the location for semi-truck parking.
So this one's a little bit of cleanup. As you recall, a few years back, we designated a parking area on, I'm drawing a blank Commerce, right? Presumably east of Sunnyside, which was the conversation we had here, so that truck drivers who lived in the city of Milton would have a place to put their trucks and in a place that was legal and close by relatively to the residents, if they were residents of town. What we discovered this spring was, we had specifically two truck drivers who found that Commerce Street was a pretty convenience place, a convenient place to park. They were following the ordinance, and the portion of Commerce Street that they parked on was right adjacent to the funeral home off of Jamesville Street. Very short dead end, one block, little lane there. I received a call from Albrechts that they were having difficulty with parking for funerals and garbage getting picked up and such, and that really wasn't our intent of where we wanted those vehicles to go anyway. So I'm bringing this to you just to add on the phrase east of Sunnyside so that we, in ordinance, are putting these trucks in the proper spot. If we were to ever need to issue a citation, we'd be legal in doing so. That being said, we asked the trucks that had started parking next to Albrechts, well before we even started the ordinance change, if they could move their trucks because of the inconvenience that it was caused, and they did. And so thank you to them for that. I appreciate them helping out Albrechts especially in getting their business going, and just need to do this quick addition to our ordinances to make it more legal for us.
Is there any clarification regarding the letter that you could talk about that we've received regarding Tammy Stanky? That refers to parking on east side of Sunnyside?
I have no feedback on that because I'm not aware of the letter. I've not seen such a letter.
Okay. It was sent out to us today? I, okay, I assumed you had received copies of it as well?
I did not.
Okay. Well, then I guess you're not of any help.
Nope, and I'm not a topic, I'm not.
Okay, well, I'll forward you a copy of it then.
That'd be great.
One of the things they come up on is the fact that the road's a little narrow over there, which leads to hazards, is what they kind of commented on.
The road being narrowed on Commerce east of Sunnyside?
Yeah, I think that's what they mentioned to here.
There's also a cul-de-sac at the end for turnarounds.
Yeah, they said parking on Commerce east of Sunnyside is very narrow, and one has to park in the ditch to get off the road, which would make it impossible when it snows.
They are not required to get off of the road. Yeah, there must be some confusion because there's no ditch on that road either. That's curb and gutter over there. So I think there's a confusion by who, I've never, this is the first time hearing of it as well, so I can't comment on it, but that section of Commerce is equal width to the section over here, and that's probably a pretty wide street, frankly. There's no ditch, it's got curb and gutter, and there's a cul-de-sac, so there must be some confusion as to what that writer believes to be the road in question. That's the only thing I can think of. Is there, I don't patrol as much as everybody else does, but is there a small chunk to the west of Sunnyside that perhaps they're referring to?
I'm not that familiar with the street. We tried to go down it, and I just couldn't, you know, I don't know that much about semis and how you operate parking, turnarounds and so forth, so I couldn't.
In our initial conversations, we specifically picked that portion of Commerce because of the cul-de-sac. That that would give plenty of turning radius to vehicles that would be needing to park. They could park facing eastbound or westbound that way. It just depends on which way they wanted to park and then have the cul-de-sac available to them to change directions.
Anything else for anyone? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-519, waive the second, and adopt.
And the third?
The third.
That's the third.
And the third, and adopt.
I'll say that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2023-520, ordinance amending section 6-203D, keeping of chickens.
Okay, so early in June, we had a resident, Ed Jacobson, who requested that the council modify the current ordinance, decreasing the minimum square footage from 16 to 10 square feet. And at that time, the council did direct staff to prepare an ordinance with that language included. Since that meeting, Ed Jacobson actually reached out again and then wanted to discuss with the council allowing an additional amount of chickens, increasing it from four to 10. So Ed Jacobson is in the audience this evening. And so what, there's a couple options, either the ordinance that is included in the agenda, the council could approve it as is, they could modify it, or they could deny the ordinance.
And do we have folks that want to speak? Okay, come on up to the microphone, first and last name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ed Jacobson, 603 Tigger Court. And yeah, so as Jenny introduced, we, I am interested in requesting that the council considers reducing, yes, reducing the square foot per chicken requirement under ordinance of chicken keeping, and then considering increasing the maximum permitted chickens from four to 10. And so I won't dive deeply, I did a little bit deeper of a dive last time, the last time we spoke about this, and so I think that the reduction in the square foot per chicken better accommodate families that are interested in keeping chickens responsibly within the city. I think that the size of the enclosures, which means the coops and the runs, is important, but I also think that the degree of care that the ordinance also regulates would work fine with 10 square feet per chicken, and I think the 16 square feet is going to impose a little bit more of a strain because you're going to end up with a huge structure, which, I, yeah, I don't, it's going to end up with a huge structure, I'll say. And then for the discussion about the maximum amount of chickens being considered to increase, that more has to deal with, I think that four is good, but that really only can accommodate smaller families. And so I did just a quick little, you know, I ran the numbers, and four chickens, which is what the current maximum permitted amount number is under the ordinance, could accommodate 0.68 eggs per person per day in a week for a family of three, and that's about 24 eggs in the week. And then seven chickens could produce about 42 eggs, which is 1.2 eggs per person per day for a family of five. And then for 10 chickens, that could accommodate roughly one egg per day per person for a family of eight. So I think that I would just request, I would like for the council to consider, you know, the family size also as it pertains to considering this ordinance and these requirements. And I think that there are good co-re requirements under the ordinance that would, you know, regulate some of the cautions, you know, the problems that it could impose with having more chickens in the city potentially. But I think that it would be good to, I suppose, reward those that want to keep chickens well and responsibly, instead of reward those that want to keep chickens well and regulate those that aren't doing a good job, and perhaps revoke permits that aren't, you know, keeping them well, than to prevent those that are going to keep them well before they have a chance to do so. And so, yeah, so those are my two interests that I would like the council to consider.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? For our presenter. Okay.
Have we looked at any other surrounding municipalities and what they do in any more detail than the last? I'm just want a copy.
You want a copy of what we've looked at?
Nope. No, I think that if, I just have an interest in what other communities do.
We have not recently, no. The only portion that we have looked is minimally at the required square footage. So the last time we discussed this was when Ed was talking about the 16 to 10, and then comparing it with the city of Jamesville, which I believe there were three or four square feet. So it's, we have not done any additional research on that or the number of chickens.
Any other information from the council?
I'm alright with the changing the square foot, but I guess, I guess I'm just not, I'm not 100% sure about adding the amount of chickens right now. I feel like we're just kind of getting started.
When did our chicken ordinance first get enacted?
Let me double check, but I believe it was early 2021. It was right before, so probably early 2021.
Same time as the B ordinance.
Bill? I'm also comfortable with the change in square footage, and, you know, we got some very good information on that. It would make sense to me to approve the change in the ordinance of the square footage, and then do a little bit of research into, you know, what other communities are doing 10. Are there some that are, you know, it sounded as if your 10 was not a magic number, it was just, you know, kind of doing the math, and, you know, perhaps study it a little bit more in terms of the number. I'm not opposed to increasing the number, but, you know, I'd like to know whether or not what we're doing is sensible, given what, given the experience of other communities.
So the effective date of the chicken ordinance was July 31st of 2020, and I believe that when I started in March, there was one application that was going through the process at that time.
Microphone.
That's right, and she is no longer there. So how many chicken owners do we actually have?
Please just come, you can come up to the microphone, first and last name and address, thank you. So we have 10 currently for chickens.
Zachary Bergs, 870 Parkview Drive, Milton, Wisconsin. To answer the question that Bill had brought up, the number of 10 chickens comes from a lot of larger cities that have the space, that are essentially just urban sprawl, kind of what Milton is, or suburban sprawl, comes from, a lot of the ordinances for larger cities typically put a cap at the number of chickens per resident of the household. So it's based on the number of residents that are in the household specifically, and they put a cap at two chickens per person in the household. So that's kind of where that comes from. So when he was, when Ed was referencing the number of chickens that, you know, 10 chickens produce so many eggs, and this would feed this many eggs to this many people, that's kind of where that's all coming into play is, yeah, it's just two chickens for, per person per household essentially is what that is, so.
I agree with what Bill said. And so I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-520. And then, do I want to, can I add to my motion that we'll have city staff look into the quantity of chickens?
Probably not.
No.
Can you just make a motion regarding the ordinance first?
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-520, amending 6-203D of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Milton.
How many times are we doing it?
First reading? Oh, no. This is the first reading, waive, second, and third, and adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and you would like to direct staff to do some research?
Yes.
Okay. Just a quick clarification, when we are researching, would you like the entire chicken ordinances as far as square footage and the number of chickens, or just the number of chickens that they allowed on a residential lot?
I think the number of chickens, what do you think, Bill?
Yeah, I think that's the issue, you know, not assuming that we would change the square footage again.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, presentation and possible action from Public Administration Associates LLC regarding city administrator position recruitment, and I would like you all to give a warm welcome to Dwayne Gow, who will be our interim city administrator. Thank you, Dwayne.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm pleased to be here tonight, representing PAA. I'm also going to be very pleased to be your interim administrator for the period of time till you can get a new minister on board. I look very forward to working with the mayor, the council, and the staff. I think it's going to be very enjoyable, and the term I usually use, I like to have a lot of fun. The other thing I think is on the agenda is preparation of the possible action for recruiting the administrator position. I think that's what you're looking for, that type of where we're at. I'm looking for, just making sure I do this properly, what you're looking for. I see all heads saying yes.
Yeah, just a quick update.
Okay, quick update is that Kevin informed me that he's already in the process of putting the notice out for the, for the notice for, for the notice of hiring for a new administrator. He's also did the contact, some of the, we have a candidate pool, pool of candidates that we would deal with, needs to be contacting them too to let them know that this is becoming up. So that's what he's done so far. And he did say to me that, usually, I don't know if he gave you a timeline for in the past on this, but he mentioned that usually takes one month, two months, and by the third, by three months, you have a new candidate on, a new candidate and a new administrator on board. And if I'm repeating myself, I don't know. I was given the mission, just went on the way down, got the call.
Does anybody have any questions or anything? You have a handout too. I think Jenny's been great about continually emailing you and communicating where we're at in the process, and Dwayne will be visiting with Al tomorrow.
That's correct.
And then we are going to create a schedule with, I think Dwayne has some ideas already about what his work schedule will be for city staff. And does anybody have any questions or anything?
Thank you very much, and look forward to working with all you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Alright. And Dwayne was so gracious to come early, and was able to be a part of our planning commission and help us celebrate Al tonight, so.
Mark's birthday.
Well, yeah, it was really all about Mark's birthday. I forgot, it's really about Mark tonight. Mark will be preparing a speech for the next meeting.
And a cake.
And a cake, and a cake. He's bringing a cake because we missed out on the ice cream bars. I feel like he brought his ice cream bars, but. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant for the property located at 44 Second Street and Tiff Number 7.
Still, Stockman Properties LLC, which recently purchased the former Methodist Church building at 44 Second Street, has submitted a grant application for a commercial facade improvement grant. The purpose of the grant application will be to do some tuck pointing and replacement of the roof as well as some landscaping. The total project cost is roughly $25,000, but based on the program guidelines, the grant itself maxes out at $10,000, so the request is for $10,000. Funding for this would come through our tax incremental financing district number seven, which is customary for that site of town in terms of commercial facade grants. So based on the application that was provided, the city administration recommends approval of the commercial facade grant in the amount of $10,000 for Stockman Property Assets LLC for the building located at 44 Second Street.
I would move approval of the facade grant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions? Does anybody have any questions? You're good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
I'll abstain.
Any, any no's? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding selection of colors and approval of the rendering for the West Tower rehabilitation project.
So the contractor that was the low bid for the tower project has provided color samples and renderings that are in the attachments for the tower. The first three, there's three copies of the same going around here. Those were the colors that were selected for the East Tower over on Rogers Street in 2010 when that was rehabilitated. And then these last group handed around are a little different color red and white that they have available as well. The two, the four renderings that they provided, the first two are matching the selection that was made before the bidding, the project went out to bid. The only change between those two renderings is the font, and then the last two renderings that they provided would match the East Tower, which they provided as another alternative that they could paint. There is an additional charge for that work of $4,260, which could be covered by the water utility if that was the selection that was desired. So what the contractor's looking for is a selection of colors and the preferred rendering.
I actually, I like the colors that you have, that the companies come to match what we already have on the other tower. My preference of the towers was number four, and that's specifically because the letters are larger, and as And, um, as somebody that drives a lot, I just, I, I use water towers to guide me sometimes.
Any other comments or, um, perspectives?
I have, uh, another, um, another issue, and the issue is regarding the white underside, um, you know, we know with the, um, the other water tower that we have a beard, uh, as it's been described to me, you know, over time, it's gotten gray, um, and, you know, looks a little, uh, I don't know. It looks dirty. I, I happened to go by the water tower in Fort Atkinson recently, which is, you know, that same kind of a model, uh, and noticed that it has the same issue. So, um, it, it looks as if that's fairly common. You know, one of my thoughts was, um, you know, what if that weren't white on the underside? You know, the, 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 the rest of the tower as described, but with a, a darker color or you know, if it were even gray to begin with, um, it wouldn't show that dirt in the same way. Um, I certainly don't want to delay this, and I certainly don't want to add costs to it. Uh, I don't think that, uh, the public could be crazy about, um, our spending, you know, more money on uh, doing that, but I don't know whether at this point that's a practical thing to do, whether it would delay um, the implementation of it.
Um, the work has not started yet, um. I would have to ask the contractor what their schedule for ordering the paint would be, I mean, I guess potentially we could have a a meeting before the next meeting if it was necessary to review some alternatives, I would like some direction as to colors, I mean, if you wanna an alternative, say alternative four, but instead of a white bowl, a gray bowl, and a black bowl, and a red bowl, I mean, we could do that.
If you look at the number four, uh, photo, it shows almost a, a grayish painted bottom.
Yeah, I think that's the shadow on this tower.
Well, it is, I'm just saying that it, it look, looks kind of what, uh, Bill was talking about, though, really. And I would agree. Uh, if you took the whole beard to it and, uh, made it that gray that you see around the top of the bottom, and filled that in.
Is, is it practical for us to approve, um, uh, number four and, uh, say go ahead with it if, um, the cost is the same?
Number four does have a cost increase.
Yeah, four has, has the cost increase, that's correct, yeah.
But you're saying if there's additional paint on the bowl?
Yeah, if there's, i- i- if, if the cost is the same with painting the bowl a different color, I would say let's go for it, and
And paint it gray.
And paint it gray.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, how do I, uh, huh, construct the motion here?
I would suggest, um, alternative four with a gray bowl.
Okay, I would move alternative four with a gray bowl.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments?
I think because those are covered in the exhibit, they're also listed on the, on the, um, alternative, that will be, okay, you certainly can, but, um, I think the odd, if you were to desire a color different than what was listed there, I think we would need to include that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, anything else? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, moving on. Discussion and possible action regarding change order number one for the two thousand twenty-three Street and Utility Infrastructure Project.
So as we're all aware, the Madison Avenue and Clear Lake Utility Infrastructure Project is well underway. Um, as part of the work, the project had planned for intermittent curb and gutter replacement. Um, as the project has prog- progressed, uh, the curb and gutter, it, it's it's in, um, worse condition than was anticipated, so, um, we've reviewed with the contractor the cost to replace all the curb and gutter, so you would have, you know, basically new co- new curb and gutter along the whole route. Uh, the cost for that work is included in the attached change order. It's approximately a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and that would be funded through the Stormwater Utility. Final project costs, uh, will ultimately be determined based on the actual work performed in the field, but that, that's roughly the amount we would see. So we're just requesting approval of that change order.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries, uh, committee reports. Anything? Alright, staff reports, anything?
I just have one quick portion of the, uh, city administrator assessment for Public Administration Associates did go out early this week. Um, so that was all sent, sent to council members and staff. It, they would like to have it back by Thursday, June twentieth, uh, if possible, so you can either email it back to Sue McDade, which is, was included in the email, or you can drop it off at my office, and then I will go ahead and get it to Sue, so they can start putting together that job announcement.
Library?
Um, our front of the Mount Public Library book sale is continuing throughout the month of July, and the last three days will be a two dollar bag sale. Um, we are still offering free passes to the Milton House Museum and free parking passes for any Wisconsin State Park. We had about six hundred people sign up for our summer reading challenge, so that's most we've had in probably a long time. And then I received a grant from the American Library Association to host a series of book discussions with MECA's next school year. And the four books will feature topics of inclusion and diversity, and we are one of twenty-nine libraries in the United States to receive that grant, so.
Superstars yet again. Chief?
As Mark mentioned, there are some roads under construction in town.
I had no idea.
No one told me. So, we remain perplexed, frustrated, blown away at the number of people who will just move a sign just so that they can drive past it. Um, we are doing the best that we can to enforce those areas with as much, um, as my staffing can allow. Um, the, the number of people blows me away, we're told by local residents and, including Al, that as soon as we're not there, there's more traffic than ever. So I don't know what more we can do to help spread the word, I don't know if somebody can watch this YouTube video and help share it with their friends and family, that a road closed means the road's closed. And it doesn't matter if your car fits between the two barricades, it's still closed. And it doesn't matter if they see other people go through it, it's still closed. And we have started issuing citations that are ranging between a hundred and thirty-five and two hundred and fifty dollars, depending on the violation. Um, we're now dealing with people driving the wrong way up Crandall Street into the Merchant Row area because apparently they can't see the, um, one-way signs and the do not enter signs. Um, it's, it, this has been a study and frustration for the police department, and I can't imagine how the neighborhoods feel about it, so. Um, we'll continue to do the best we can and help spread the word for us.
Thanks.
There we go. The Historic Preservation Commission is hosting the Gravestone Preservation Workshop tomorrow from nine AM to three PM at the cemetery on North Janesville Street. We have representatives from, um, Atlas Preservation coming in to show the group how to, um, clean and also restore, um, the, the gravestones in, in the cemetery. So really looking forward to that, we've gotten a number of phone calls over the last couple of weeks about people interested in attending, so, um, should be a good event with, with some good reach there. I also wanted to give an update on the police chief recruitment, the police commission is meeting this week, they're, they met last night, and then they're meeting again tomorrow night. They're interviewing five candidates, and then hopefully have a decision on finalists tomorrow evening after their last one, and we'll go from there and we'll let you know about next steps.
Thank you very much.
It's the Gravestone Preservation Workshop, it's from nine AM to three PM, so even if you're able to come for just a portion, we'd love to have you.
And I have a vested interest in this event too. Um, but just to point out that this company is doing a forty-eight state tour, and they're stopping at every state in the continental United States to do one of these projects, and they picked Milton out of the entire state of Wisconsin. So it's pretty cool that they're gonna be here, and, yeah, really encourage people to come.
That's awesome. Mark E.
Well, the other Mark isn't here, so. We all knew who it was. Madison Avenue, Clear Lake are under construction, um, North Street, North Street, uh, we should see some construction work, probably starting on that within the next couple of weeks, I I think based on the conversations with the contractor. Crack sealing and, uh, seal coating will start end of this week or sometime next week. Uh, we should see some paving in our residential subdivision developments also in the upcoming weeks. And the Putman Parkway cul-de-sac project just went out to bid, we've got our well improvement projects, um, engineer's on site tomorrow, look at the chemical separation to meet those requirements, so, a lot of stuff going on.
Yep. Kelsey, do we have any money left?
There's some money. Um, this week I've been attending the Virtual Clerks and Treasures Institute hosted by UW Green Bay. Um, it's been two days full of learning so far and three more to go, I look forward bringing back some ideas to implement. And then once that's over, I'm gonna roll into twenty twenty-four budget, and I'll be working with department heads to start pulling that all together.
Thank you very much. Well, well, well. Well, we know, we know it won't be as long as if Chief Pickering was here, but it might be close. Any, any comments you'd like to share? Anything new?
Um, approved a couple of site plans at Plan Commission, and then we have some other projects that will come down the pipe, and Dwayne will, I'm sure handle those very well and very professionally, and we'll, uh, the city will keep on moving, irrespective of who's sitting at this seat. And I say it all the time, because it has to. We will carry on, so. Hopefully folks can make it on Thursday, if you can't, I understand, I won't be offended, um, but, uh.
Any big added birthday that we can celebrate?
Yeah, anybody wanna hijack that party too?
I could prove my son.
Yeah, there you go, perfect.
Well, thank you, and
I just wanna thank Al for the write-up that he provided. Um, you know, that is invaluable to, um, to, to me as an older person, as well as, uh, to, uh, Dwayne as he comes on board and so on. Um, that, you spent some time on that, I think, uh, and it is well worth it, so, thank you.
Anything else for anybody? Okay, just don't cry, but you can, you can talk. I am talking to you. Okay, well, almost the entire time I've been mayor. I am sorry, it was my idea, no. Thank you for being our city administrator, and we, we've worked together so well, I can't think of anybody I've worked together better with, and I think we've only had one argument.
One and a half.
One and a half arguments, which I think is pretty good.
In nine years?
I mean, maybe we like just quit speaking to each other, but we didn't argue. No, it's been fabulous, and, um, when the community voted to change the ordinance to bring on someone that had talent in economic development, um, like Al was perfect. And we, we wouldn't be where we are today, we wouldn't have the equalized value, we wouldn't be on the map, we wouldn't be superstars at the library and our cemeteries, and, um, you know, it's really all due to Al's dedication and commitment and the work that we, as an organization, undertook during COVID. I mean, when I think back about it, I'm like, I don't even know what we were thinking, but we did so much work, and CQC is a game changer forever for this community, forever, um, so is, uh, Charter NEX, but I remember all the calls during COVID that we had, and uh, and the hours, and the endless hours that Al spent on that, um. Like, it's unbelievable, I, I don't think we could ever put into words how much time and effort, um, was placed on that project, and, um, and it can, our industrial park, um, residential development, every, um, growth spurt that we have had, we can directly tie to us hiring Al, really, when, uh, and Al knows us, and it's just a reminder for other folks, when Al came on board, like, our equalized value actually had decreased in previous years, right, so we had to dig ourselves out of a hole, and, and we did it, so I can't, you know.
What I'm always gonna remember is an email that Al sent out that made it look like CQC was going down because of the rail spur. Um, you know, and it was, I won't repeat the words that I muttered, um, you know, thinking that that was there, uh, but, uh, kept at it, and we got it.
So it would not be a city council meeting without team building, and this is what I'm sure Al is gonna miss the most. And I did give you all a hint, um, it had to do with your, like, growing up, your childhood. And you can, you can pick any timeframe, really, I would say, I don't know, you don't have to, like, go back to your first memories, but, share, share with your colleagues what comedy sitcom was popular when you were growing up? Uh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to, the, the Eric, we need a different question for Eric right now.
Three's Company? That's it, that's the one.
How old do you think he is?
I'm older than you. Yeah. Forty-seven? I was born in seventy-six.
Sorry.
Michael Jackson Thriller.
Charlotte remembers your childhood better, Eric, I'm sorry.
It wasn't Cosby Show?
Uh, like, we didn't live your childhood either.
Right, clearly.
So is that your answer? Okay, okay.
Home Improvement.
I was gonna say that one too, Home Improvement, watch with my dad, all the time.
Okay, so how old were you when you started watching football then? Oh, okay. I'm gonna go, uh, with Saved by the Bell. That was popular when my children were growing up. That was a lot of my childhood.
I'll follow it up with Boy Meets World.
Oh, of course you will.
I'll take Full House.
Alright, the old guy's gotta speak. The Honeymooners.
Oh, nice job, Bill. Anybody, uh, born after eighty-six, remember The Honeymooners? Watch The Honeymooners, too, but that's not my answer. Okay, how about this one? My Three Sons?
Bewitched.
Oh, I love Bewitched. Oh, Teresa Took May Ash. Yes. I love May Ash, yeah. So, I mean, Dwayne, you do have to go, and so does Holly. Did Mark not tell you? He had told you. Mark will have to give two answers next meeting then. And Mark, Mark, did you go, Mark?
Gilligan's Island.
Oh, yeah. So did everybody, uh, did you go, Chief?
Holly just stole mine. I'll go a little non-traditional, not really considered sitcom, but comedy, Dukes of Hazzard. It was a pretty fun show in our house.
Hogan's Heroes. Good job, you guys. Good job. Party Miller. All right, that was a little trip down nostalgia lane. The next meeting date is August first, Tuesday, August first. Al will be at home watching the Brewers game and eating popcorn.
Tennessee.
Tennessee, Tennessee. So. Send us a YouTube. Plus, there's a Powerball coming up. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All those in favor? They want to post for adjourn?